You would bow your heads with me, Derek. I'm a pilot, thank you to the state, thank you for the time we could spend together. Thank you for blessing this community, thank you for blessing the public. Thank you for allowing us to make the decisions that you want us to make. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
That was mine. Oh, I'm gonna move a couple of things around on the agenda tonight. Move mayor's announcement, appointment, vote to the end. I'm gonna go ahead and take, report some staff, anything, Mr. Cameron?
No, I just want to thank everybody that was able to come out last week and just, my family, they finally got moved in, but it was really special to see everyone come out and say hello and kinda get a chance to meet my better half and two-thirds with my kids, but my parents to be there, so it was really nice and I just felt the welcome was really nice, but, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Derrickson, any answers? Alright, fantastic. On to citizen participation, anybody wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, please come forward, state your names, sign in, give us your best three minutes. Seeing none, citizen participation closed. Need a motion on the agenda? Motion. Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries. We're on the financial report. Welcome, Mr. O'Donnell, give us the overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just a few brief comments. First off, on cash, we increased by approximately $360,000, and that was basically from normal operations and also some semi-annual franchise fees totaling in excess of $105,000, so that was a good start. Other than that, year-to-date revenue expense, we were down a little bit last month, we had a rebound back such that year-to-date revenue over expense for 2016 is $780,000 versus $589 for this time last year, up by approximately $190,000. And then, with respect to sales tax information, which I usually have, I will present that at the second meeting when I have all the numbers available. And with that, I am done.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. O'Donnell? Anything at all? Seeing none, need a motion to approve financial report?
Motion.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries six to zero. On the future community events, welcome, Mr. Keeling, how was vacation, sir?
It was wonderful, thank you very much, appreciate it. Good to be back, though, good to be back.
It's good to have you back, sir.
It's gonna be a great week this week, sixth annual youth tiger try is on Friday, it begins at 6:45 PM based out of Miller Park. Saturday morning, early Saturday morning, is our 10th annual Republic Tiger Triathlon, it begins at 7:00 AM, it's open to ages everyone 14 and up. August 15th, 22nd, and 29th is toddler open gym, that's at 9:00 AM and open for ages zero to five. August the 19th is the last date of registration for fall youth co-ed soccer, that's for ages four to 12. The game days will be on Tuesdays and Thursdays played at Groot Field. August 19th is also the last date of registration for our youth flag football program, that's for grades one through four. Those games are played on Mondays at Bourbon White Memorial Baseball Softball Complex. August 25th is senior movie day, sorry, I do not have that movie listing with me tonight. August the 27th is our second annual youth got mud run, excited about this, we already have 260-some kids signed up, so we should get close to 500 or 600 this year, I would think, which will be just wonderful, and it's at Brookline Park, that's open to ages four to 15-year-olds. And August 29th through September 23rd is registration for our youth girls basketball program, that's for grades K through six, and the season begins on October 17th. One more note that's not on here, the Republic Aquatic Center is open daily through Wednesday, and then weekends only through Labor Day.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Board of Commissions committee schedule, Board of Adjustments, September 1st, capital improvements, August 24th, City Council meetings, August 22nd and September 12th, and planning and zoning, August 15th. On all business and table items, the motion to the second reading, Bill number 16 dash 1-2.
Motion.
Second. Have a motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri to establish a procedure for disclosing potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials.
Motion to final approval, Bill number 16 dash 1-2.
Second.
Motion is second. Mr. Derrickson?
Yes, sir.
Give us the overview, sir.
As related, at the last meeting, this is kind of a housekeeping matter, by virtue of a statutory language, we can adopt this ordinance every two years and not have to actually file the formal paperwork as long as we're in compliance with what this ordinance says as far as conflicts of interest. And so, this is something we've done for the last several years, every two years.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Derrickson? Anything at all? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Breschers?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you very much, on the next item. I'd like to have a motion to have the second reading of Bill number 16 dash 1-3.
Motion.
Have a motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, amending Schedule 1, Table 1B, school zones of the traffic code of the Republic Municipal Code.
Need most have final passage, Bill number 16 dash 1-3.
Motion.
Second. Have a motion is second. Welcome, Mr. Brock, give us the overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance creates a school zone in the vicinity of the Republic High School, Republic High School and MoDOT are partnering up to construct that school zone with flashing lights and signage. The enforcement side of it changed to our ordinance would put that school zone in effect to 10 mile an hour reduction from 65 to 45 when the lights were flashing. Any questions on school zone, I'd be happy to answer that. We're attempting to be agile with a substitute bill here. Several months ago, Lieutenant Wheeler and I met with representatives from MoDOT who had done a speed study on East Highway 60, that's the vicinity of McAdoodles out to Republic Ford. And based on the results of their speed study, they wanted to increase the speed limit in that area. Eighty percentile, I think, was over 20 miles an hour above that posted limit. So, we had a little back and forth that day with the representatives, the idea was that they would come back to the, back to the city with a proposal, and we would go from there. Got off track at some point because the speed limit signs went up last week, for any of you that drive that stretch. With state highways, we're really in a poor position to do anything other than do our background work to then enforce the speed limits that MoDOT posts. So, you have in your packet a substitute bill which incorporates the change to the school zone that we had our first reading on. The substitute bill incorporates changes to speed limits on Highway 60. East Highway 60 that conforms to the signs that have been put up. Do want to mention that in our traffic codes, there are provisions for police chief to authorize special or emergency regulations. There is presently in effect an emergency order that would allow enforcement of that. That would, if council choose to approve the substitute bill, that emergency order would go away and those speed limits would become a formal part of our traffic code.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Derrickson, you want to jump in too?
Yes, if council chooses to adopt the substitute council bill, which staff is recommending, we need a motion to adopt the substitute bill, second, and vote, and then that will be the bill that will be up for final roll call vote.
Does that all make sense?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to adopt substitute bill number 16-1-3.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion on that, since I have a motion is second? Any questions? Okay, with that, I can do, take a vote on that.
Just make a vote, second.
Have a motion is second, accepting substitute bill number 16 dash 1-3, so, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Try that again, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you, we are now discussing the bill that's in front of you that we just accepted, our substitute bill number 16-1-3. Further discussion, comments, or questions, for Mr. Brock or Mr. Derrickson? We're all on the same page. Mr. Harder?
PR for the traffic changes, what are your plans on informing the public?
With the Highway 60 or the school zone?
School zone.
Highway 60. School zone, we're waiting on the school to actually construct their part. I think we can get together with the school, certainly that will be something that they will communicate directly with the staff. We have pretty good social media set up, so that may be the most direct route to get a hold of the affected public.
Thank you. Good question. Additional questions, comments, discussion? Anything at all? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Breschers?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero, thank you very much, thank you. On the next item, I'd like to have a motion to have the second reading, Bill number 16 dash 1-4.
Motion.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, adopting a job description for the position of Human Resource General.
Need most have final passage, Bill number 16 dash 1-4. Motion. Motion is second. Welcome, Mr. Keeling, give us the overview, sir.
Thanks, sir. Just gonna reiterate a few things Angela said last time, and please feel free to ask any questions. This will formalize the job description for a Human Resources Generalist, it is a new position for the city. We had budgeted in 2016 a permanent part-time administrative assistant for the HR department. This will take that to a different level, the creation of the Human Resources Generalist position. Areas of focus will be providing administrative assistance to the HR director, payroll processing, benefit compliance, policy revision, loggers, DOL and FLSA compliance, and some special projects also will include a universal timekeeping system, employee training initiatives through MPR, aforementioned policy review and updates, and assistance every, biannually in salary surveys. The end result to the city this year will be right at $3,200. We did realize a couple thousand dollars saving in salary, which I believe that you mentioned last time, Mr. Wilson. But going forward, we're looking at the position being a grade three, step one. It's an hourly position, it's 14, 16 an hour, which equals $29,452 a year.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Keeling? Anything at all?
I have a curiosity question.
Mr. Wilson, please.
Okay, with everything that this person is supposed to do, how much is the Human Resource Officer left?
Sure. That's a fair question. (laughter) I can tell you, though, just, and I'm sure David can speak to this far greater than I can, but just being in the position of just the interim city administrator for six months, that office has kept incredibly busy. And if you get one personnel matter, just one, that takes a significant amount of time, which it happens here a lot, I mean, they get behind easily. I do want to say, though, that everything's on the table now as far as changing, moving forward, evolving, and we've got a lot to change and get better at. I do think there's a lot to this position, but our HR director can take on a more progressive role in getting us to where we need to be. There is a lot of work there for two people, I firmly believe there's enough, but if David, you want to speak to that anymore, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the thing that I look at is just, there is opportunity in the HR department. One is a standardized performance review process, things that get missed in growing the organization, and there's not a consistent standard process that we use that every department head would put in place. And so, there's a lot more policy, updating the employee handbook, taking care of those things and managing them and updating them, versus someone that's coming in that's got a sick time issue or needing help with the insurance, things that come along that employee needs to call and say, hey, my wife went to this hospital, and I need to get this reimbursed. We want them to have that type of care, but the HR director doesn't necessarily need to be handling that where someone can just answer those questions. But I do see where there is, there is a need for that position to grow or to have a full 40 hours, but it will not, there's a lot included in the job description that'll still be handled by the HR director. But we have to include all that because they will share in those responsibilities.
As I say, it was just a curiosity question.
Yes, but it's a good question, we need to explain it.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? Good question, Mr. Wilson. Anything at all?
They will direct, directly report to the Human Resource?
That is correct.
Manager, thank you.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Breschers?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the next item, I'd like to have a motion to have the first reading of Bill number 16 dash 1-5. Motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to enter into a development agreement regarding development of property currently owned by MM Highway LLC and Heart of America Beverage Company LLC.
Thank you, Brenda. Give us the overview, Mr. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As many of you know, several months ago, Heart of America announced that they were going to be developing a business in the Brookline Development District. Since that time, there was some development that took place, or the location of that building would be located along, it would take out, would be Empire Street, and I can reflect or refer you to Exhibit D in this document in your packet. I might have to look this up, it's very difficult, but there, on Empire Street, the very top of the, middle of the page, about midway up. Originally, the history of this council had approved that if that cul-de-sac was established, that in the future there would be a through street from Empire, completing that, going on through, that it would not be another cul-de-sac there. When the development was laid out and presented to the staff, that building would be sitting right in the middle of where that street was to run. And so, in an effort to try to work with the developer and partner with a way to get that project moving forward, we came up with the option, which was a cost-share agreement to go to MM Highway, which is also in your packet, I believe it is Exhibit B. This is the Carnahan White property that is just immediately west. And so, working with the developer, we came up with a, and with the Department of Transportation, MoDOT, was to build a, they would allow us to have an intersection at that location if we were to build that as a city street standard rather than as a fire lane, which is needed for the property. And so, what this would, in essence, do is establish about a 35-foot section coming off of MM, that would be the, with the anticipation of a future street going all the way to James River Expressway, that would connect all those other development properties which are outlined in Exhibits, go back to Exhibit B again, and you can kind of see how that street would go on through to James River. And so, this would be in the best interest, I believe, of the city moving forward for the use of that property, whereas if it's built the way it's submitted, we'd have one point in and one point out to the rest of those properties, and so this gives us a second point of ingress and egress to our property, and I believe would improve the traffic flow. But I also believe it stays within the spirit of, since we're deviating from what the council originally believed when they closed Empire Street, that that would be a through street, that this would address that and still allow the development to take place and meet our objectives and theirs as well. And so, that's a whole lot of Exhibits and talking, but I'll answer any questions or comments that you have regarding the development.
Questions, comments, discussion, and, Mr. Cameron means MM, state MM.
What did I say?
James River, it's fine.
Well, I do apologize, but the future would be anticipated, that it would go from MM to James River.
Absolutely. Questions, comments, discussion? Anything at all?
Is that the, on Exhibit B, the road coming through there, that access lane, is that going to infringe on the property there to the south? Have they been notified or that it was going to affect them? Could be Carnahan White?
We will need right-of-way from Carnahan White in the future, but it will not, for us to, future development, we'll still need to get property from them to do that. So, right-of-way procurement is in there, and it is in our cost estimate that is provided, that we will need right-of-way from them for it.
Okay.
But as for how they've been contacted, I'd have to defer to David, because he's handling those.
We need to be further along in the process.
Okay.
We need to be able to define what is, if we're going to ask.
Very good, thank you.
Additional questions, comments, discussion?
Personally, I'd like to thank Mr. Cameron, this project has been going on for about a year and a half, and we finally got to this stage when he came on board. So, the last 30 days, we took a year and a half of information back and forth, and between him and Mr. Tyson, they have put together, and Mr. Derrickson's put together quite a plan, so, and Mr. Brock too, so I appreciate all, everyone's work.
Thank you.
Thank you for leading that as well, so.
There's no other further comments, questions, discussion on that particular item, we will move on, that is a first read. So, if you have questions or comments between now and then, contact Mr. Cameron or Mr. Brock. We'll go on to the next item. Resolution number 16 dash R dash 62, resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, authorizing city administrator to increase the annual 2015 allowance for reimbursable expenses with Roger Day, Better Projects. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion is second. Welcome, Mr. Tyson, please give us an overview, sir.
Sure. If you're not aware, the city planning department uses a third-party consultant to conduct building code reviews for any commercial developments, and so, what that consultant does is they charge the city by the hour, and then we get reimbursed from the project owner for that consultant's time. The contract we have with Better Projects, Roger Day is the owner of Better Projects, the contract we have with them allows us to utilize him for up to $5,000 during that contract period, which is one year. Right now, we are bumping up against that $5,000 limit, and so we're asking council to increase the maximum allowable limit on that contract to $8,000, and that will run us through December 1st. I am confident that the $8,000 will be enough to cover those expenses through that time period.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Tyson, Mr. Self?
Is this something that we could do internally instead of outsourcing?
Not presently, no.
Not presently?
It's a, that's a good question, potentially we could, but not, not with our present staffing levels. The person who would have the most expertise to be able to do this is the building inspector, but he's obviously spending 90% of his day out in the field, which would make it very difficult for him to do these reviews.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to elaborate on that point. One of the things that we're evaluating internally with the staff is our resources with the Building and Development Department, and so, with the establishment of filling the position that is vacant in that area, that is one of the evaluations that needs to be done, is to what are the resources needed from the building department, just in the feedback that's being received. As I go around town and just listen and talk with the development community, we definitely need to shore up the resources in the development area, and that might be an additional resource. It's very atypical to be outsourcing that and not have it internally, so we will be evaluating everything that we can do that'll improve the flow of our process to the development community, and I think that's one of the things that we'll be looking at, so I don't want to just leave that open handed, that we will evaluate those services in that process, and have a chance to communicate or participate and support that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good question. Additional questions, comments, discussion? Anything at all? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Brock. On the next item on the agenda, resolution number 16 dash R dash 63, resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, awarding a bid for the multi-function printer and authorizing immediate purchase thereof. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion is second. Welcome, Mr. Brock, give us the overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, this is toward a bid for a combination plotter and scanner. The intent is to replace a plotter that's about 12-years-old we currently use. We're looking to add the scanning capabilities so that we can start scanning some of our large construction plans and have those, make those available in a digital format. It's a project that we've got three departments, kind of pooling resources, planning, parks, and public works. We selected a Hewlett-Packard model as most, best suited for current and present, for future needs. Solicited quotes from three firms, we had two vendors respond. Springfield Blueprint submitted one bid. Engineers Ripper Graphics submitted two bids, however, one bid was contingent, had a deadline of, of an offer being valid through July 29th. So, from an evaluation perspective, I think we only have two valid bids. Apparently, the bidder is Springfield Blueprint. We presently use them to, for maintenance and service on our existing plotter. Garrett is best familiar with that, he seems to be quite satisfied with their services, and I want to make sure I point that out, because one of the, one of the items that is included in our bid is a service plan. We're going to extend the manufacturer's one-year warranty to a three-year term. So, there's a, you can go through the bid items there for extra set of cartridges, the extended warranty, setup and training, and then we ask them to provide a trade-in cost for our old plotter. Bottom line there for Springfield Blueprint, total cost of $9,356.70. We're asking for a award to Springfield Blueprint.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock? Mr. Harder?
I know you have a trade-in credit for the Jet 4000, is there any use, I mean, you said, on the end of the flycycle, is there any use left to it, or you still utilize that printer?
Um, there are some parts that lay up on top of it, we really don't know where they came from.
Okay, never mind.
It may have some value, salvage value, but not for any city department.
Thank you.
Sorry, was I going to try to fix it?
It sounds like it would cause more to evaluate what those parts are than what you're saying.
Just checking if you're interested, I'm sure we can make a deal. Additional questions, comments, discussion?
This is not a budget.
Pleasure to attend, sir.
This is.
It is.
The cooperative thing between the departments here, parts department's budgeting five, we're budgeting four and a half, the planning department takes care of all the disposable supplies and, and electricity department, so we've got a, there's a budgetary standpoint.
Questions? Additional questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries six to zero, thank you, Mr. Brock. Next item. Resolution number 16 dash R dash 64, resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, awarding a bid for reinforced box culvert and authorizing immediate purchase thereof. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Have a motion is second. Mr. Brock, give us the overview. Mr. Brock, give us the overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another bid award. We have a budgeted project to replace culverts under Farm Road 97. We took that road over from the county when we were doing annexation out there along with the plane. Last year, we had a collapse of the existing culvert. When we opened the road up, we found at some point, road crews had just smashed together a couple different sides, sizes of culverts, and those were rusty out. So, we've filled that in with concrete and got this included, got a full replacement included in our 2016 budget, and we're ready to move forward with that project. Unfortunately, we have really only one local provider for this type of concrete, that's Skirlock Industries. You see, we were able to get a bid from a company out of Fulton, Missouri, but shipping cost really makes it impractical to consider that, you can see by the bid, it's not very competitive. We did check with MoDOT awarded bids. The price that Skirlock gave us is within the cost that they give on similar projects. Preference, of course, would be to have two good local competing firms, but unfortunately, that's just not the situation we have. So, we're asking to award to Skirlock Industry, the cost for all of the culvert sections, $8,388.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock?
Seems like a lot of difference in the bid.
Want them shipped.
Cost was double.
Ship three hours away.
Is that the difference?
Yes, ma'am. It's very heavy.
And a lot of it.
And a lot of it.
Yeah.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. On the next item? Resolution number 16-R-65, a resolution of the City Council of the City Republic of Missouri, authorizing the purchase of 3.46 acres of real property from Greene County. Would you like to have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion in a second. Mr. Brock, give us the overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the council might be familiar with the project that we're moving forward to make some substantial modifications to our Schuler Creek, Schuler lift station. Some of the features that we need to add require additional land rights. We currently have an easement that's condemned, and property owners essentially inside the fences. The features that we're wanting to add, we need a building extension to house electrical components, this would penetrate the existing fence. We're wanting to add a well and pressure tank to allow equipment and features out there to be washed down on side as opposed to hauling water out there. And we're also wanting to set up commercial trash service, so we're looking to add a commercial access drive so that trash trucks can easily get in and out. It is fortunate that Greene County Highway purchased the land under and around the lift station there. They did that in conjunction with their road improvement project that they completed a couple of years ago. From the time that they began designing that project, we initiated discussions with them about purchasing the property when they were done. Since they used federal highway funds, there was a lot of paperwork to get completed on their end of it, and it was just a couple of months ago that they reached the point where they could consider selling us the property. So, we're asking to purchase the remainder of the ethere property that they have north of Farm Road, Farm Road 186. It comes to 3.46 acres. The county did provide the formal appraisal that they had done on the property. They are offering to sell it for about 15% less than the price that they purchased. I'll be honest, we don't need all 3.46 acres for a present project. We could probably get by with 1.7 acres, but it's difficult to foresee what that facility might need 10 years from now or farther down the line. And with wastewater facilities, the more buffer that you have, the better off you're going to be. I don't think we'll be in a position to acquire property at this price or with a friendly, under friendly negotiations. Again, I mentioned before, the rights that we do have went through a condemnation process. So, county's asking price is $10,000 per acre. That would come to a total of $34,600 for that acreage.
Questions, comments, discussion, Mr. Bashers?
David, is that included the old house that's been demolished?
It does not. That's on the, yes, that's on the adjacent property.
Additional comments, questions, discussion? Anything at all? Mr. Harder?
And where is that money coming from?
We have 1.2 million budgeted for the project this year. The pace we're on will probably be out for bids and bring those bids back to council early October possibly, so we know we're not going to get into construction this year. The 1.2 is originally hoped to include the cost for land acquisition, but our engineers' estimate, the project that we're going out to bid is about 1.2. So, what we're going to need to do, we certainly have the funding available this year for property purchase. When we get into the 2017 budget, we'll need to, with the, hopefully bids in hand, be able to plan that out for our 2017 fiscal year. Thank you.
So, it'll be on next year's budget?
Correct. The majority is construction. There may, we may have some expense towards construction this year if we award a bid and they're able to order materials, but it's hard to imagine actually getting into construction before next spring.
All right, thank you. Additional questions, comments, discussion? Anything at all? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. On the next item? Resolution number 16-R-66, a resolution of the City Council of the City Republic of Missouri, authorizing the execution of a contracted denim with Olson Associates. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second. Have a motion in three seconds? Mr. Brock, give us the, I did, I did ask. Mr. Brock, give us the overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, item here is related to our road improvement project on East Tines and North Oakwood. We have a master agreement with Olson Associates for our engineering design work, and when we went through a selection process and negotiated that contract, we knew we would need assistance with right-of-way acquisition, but until you have a definition of those parcels, it's very difficult to know what assistance you need and more importantly, what you should be paying for. We're far enough along now, we've identified the different pieces of right-of-way and easements that we'll need from various property owners, and under the federal highway rules and MoDOT oversight, we do need formal appraisals for those parcels, and we need appraisal reviews. So, Olson has gone out and found some qualified individuals to help us with those valuations, and this contracted denim then defines the additional scope of work and the additional compensation that they would receive to prepare those appraisals for us, appraisals and valuations.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock? Mr. Self, go ahead.
I'm new, so pardon this question, but to me, it seems like with the right-of-way, I would have thought the right-of-way would have came before, not now, as far as for the approval for those right-of-ways. Is that, is that normal? Is that typical?
That is, that is typical. You need to be far enough along in your design to be able to find what you need for permanent right-of-way or easement. So, right now, we're beyond 66% completed on the, on the design. You know that the stormwater, you know, whether stormwater features are going to be, your sidewalks, any slopes, and this is really the natural point to have those parcels defined. It is, this is a little different for us in a road project because we are using federal highway funds, so it's a very regimented process that's dictated to us from federal highway and through MoDOT. That's what makes these appraisals required. Certainly, we have that too, to be fair with our local residents and business owners, property owners, but the appraisals help us do that.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? I mean, I'm making $1 million for this project. I guess my question is, is why weren't these included in the original contract?
Appraisals are site-specific. The proposals that were given from Southwest Valuation and from Deborah Parson and Co., those were based on knowing the square footage of what needed to be acquired. They can do a quick check on what type of property is it. Is it residential, is it commercial? You could ask for proposals upfront, but without those details, you could not get a very accurate proposal, and more than likely, those numbers would be inflated just because they're speculating on what type of work and how much effort they're going to have to put out. We have 17, I'm sorry, 16 parcels that we need to acquire. Not all of them require formal appraisals. We didn't know that upfront. There are simpler methods that can be used, and we're going to take advantage of that wherever we can, but we're a formal appraisal and review appraisal is necessary. We're not to a point where we can limit to just those cases.
But Mr. Self was right, though. That should have been included. We should have known we were going to need the appraisals from the beginning, right?
We do need the appraisals, but you can't, we couldn't have received an accurate proposal until we knew what the appraisals would cover. How many square footage on this parcel, square footage on this parcel? We'd have been really just giving a rough estimate of what we think we might need. We know exactly what we need now, so the appraisals will be precise, the proposal for the cost to do the appraisal is precise.
Is due to negotiation?
We are.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? Mr. Mayor? Don't jump in.
Question. Was it a lump sum bid, Dave? And this is for, I'm playing catch-up on the overall project itself, is that a STP project?
It is a STP project, yes.
So, now, I guess that would generate a question, though, in that application, I believe those applications, though, don't they require us to have that estimate in there?
For?
Cost-share agreement.
It's not a cost-share.
Oh, okay, so?
It's, we're simply, we're using our STP allocation.
I'm with you.
And we did have, in our, in our project budget, we do have costs for right-of-way acquisition, and big-picture wise, we're still looking good for our overall budget. So, it's, the land acquisition was not unanticipated, the services were not unanticipated, but we needed to be to a point where we got the best value for dollars by having those, that right-of-way easement defined.
Okay. Then, Mr. Mayor, to answer what your question is, in a, in a cost-share agreement with the state, you can estimate, so I mean, it's not unheard of to add in that in the contract. I mean, if that's something that, as long as it's just communicated upfront, that those things are estimated and brought into those agreements, because we do that with cost-share, the one that we just got the other day asked for a right-of-way acquisition as well. So, I mean, those are estimates that are included in the overall budget, so those have to be submitted before you can get the project done, so it is not unforeseeable that you put that stuff in there. So, I mean, I get what the question or the comment is, but it's done both ways, correct?
It is.
I just want to clarify that, because there, you may see a different project that'll say that the right-of-way acquisition is included in the project.
I think every, I think it's come from council, it's right-of-way in the project.
It's typical.
I think that's what, at least that's what I'm basing it on, if you're basing the same thing.
Okay.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any abstentions? Motion carries, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Brock. I'm going to move on, one more on before we go, let's see. I just have a couple of announcements. The Bluegrass and Barbecue is Friday, August 19th at 5:30 to 8:30, and that's for the Republic Pregnancy Care Center, and that will be held at Republic Community Center, that's Friday, August 19th, and also the Republic Pregnancy Resource Center, Rocko's Italian Kitchen gets a cut off everything Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, August 15th, 16th, and 17th. Are those the announcements? Ms. Cool, did I miss anything there? Okay, you're welcome. And last but not least, one more thing, too, there's been a lot of rumor that we're moving to Kansas City, or Kansas, because our son's going to school there. No, I'm not moving to Kansas where our son's going to school. He wouldn't allow us to move to Kansas. Anyone born and raised, say, "Would you, son?" No. No, he would not allow that. However, we are, August 30th will be my last day as mayor. We are moving. I took a job in, for our company in Tennessee, it's okay, but, I took a job in Tennessee in our corporate office, and look, it's going to be a change for us. My wife's born and raised here. I've enjoyed my time as mayor, getting to know everybody, seeing the direction of the city. Mr. Cameron's a great asset. Mr. Keeling's a great asset. The department has a great asset. You have great leadership in place. Mr. Harder will take over, and my last meeting will be August 22nd. My last day will be August 30th as city mayor of the city republic. It's been a great ride. It's been a fantastic, fantastic journey to be on with this community, the city, and these staff members, and I look forward to seeing what Republic does in the future. There's a lot of great things going on. There's a lot of great things that are just right at the edge of poise, just to make it great, and looking forward to watching it from afar, but I'll be from afar watching it, too. I'm sure Mr. Cameron and I will be trading, and Mr. Keeling and I, and Mr. Derrickson and Ms. Jackson will be trading texts and emails over the next several weeks, but they'll keep me informed after we, after we leave, so. It has been a pleasure. There's good things about being mayor. There's some things that you wish you would never see or hear, but all in all, it is a great experience, and this, this community is, is ready to go. And I have the leadership of Mr. Cameron. I really have full faith and confidence in him and Mr. Keeling, and how they can direct and lead this organization to great heights. And we'll have a time for celebration, we'll have a time for other things here, I think, within the next few weeks. I told Mr. Harder, if you, you want my opinion on something, you better ask, because I'll give it to you now, because you don't usually hear my opinion on anything, but you'll definitely want to ask. You want to know something, I'll tell you. And you can dig as far back as you want, Mr. Wilson. I probably remember that.
Yeah.
It has been a great ride.
I knew you were leaving, I just couldn't get it out of my head.
No, you tried every way you could, Mr. Wilson. It has been a great journey with this community. I love watching Republic grow.
When Dan was pictured in the paper, someone asked me if he was leaving. They thought Dan had already taken over.
That's a rumor I started. I just saw that picture today.
They'll think I'm lying.
Republic is, is a great place with great people and great pride, and it's nice to see city council take pride and ownership of what they do. I'm going to miss you, and miss this community, miss this area of the country. Somebody asked me, "Mr. Mayor, are you going to get involved in politics when you're, wherever you go?" And I said, "My wife said no." And then I answered, "No," so that's.
It's her turn?
That's the answer. It's her turn. I got to tell you a quick story, though.